Sorry. I call meeting in order. Everyone in attendance? Stay in touch.
I put the leaders to the flag in the United States of America. They can share their heart with what you stand as one nation, America, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
I'm looking at my attendance point. Nice chance. All right. Next, I'll give you one second chance to read the minutes and the agenda. If so, then we'll be looking for a motion.
I move to consent today's agenda in the minutes from May 12th, May 18th, and May 25th.
Do we have a motion with anything interesting to move to consent the agenda? From the minutes of 5:12, 22, 18, 22, and 25, 22. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Johnson. Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it so passed. We're gonna come back to this one, our presentation for the 2021 audit by Gordon Meyer. Moving forward, then we'll come back to this one too, sheriff's report. President's report. A lot of what I'd be commenting on is what we're gonna be going through later in the agenda. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet. There's some items on the settling hole that's formed on the south side of the village that might be related to the tringes. But otherwise, I guess the next item would be, we are in a little bit of an odd situation right now. Building five went to get their occupancy. And the city of Racine is basically putting a moratorium on occupancies until we get the road repaved here. So that forces the update or brings up the update for the Nielsen Mattson Barbers. They're actually out there today surveying the area. So what they do is they survey first, they get all their points, and then they actually do the design. So we're kinda stuck right now. So we were talking about rent forgiveness. Obviously, they can't occupy us, they can't do their business without having their occupancy. So we're gonna be basically doing rent refunds until we get ourselves in order because there's no reason we should be charging them rent when it's our issue right now.
Any ideas when they're gonna start paving here? I know that they're, the city is waiting for things, but I mean...
We gotta get them a drawing first, that's what the city said. Because when we originally tried to start with asphalt contractors, they wouldn't accept their drawing, and they wanted something that had...
Okay, that's what they did, Nielsen?
Nielsen started that process today.
Okay. So they're gonna get them pictures and the plans and all that, and then the city's gonna...
Well, it's a little bit more than that because once we get the drawing from Nielsen, depending on what it is, we might have to send this back out to bid. Because of what, it might change a little bit from what asphalt contractor was proposing. So asphalt, of course, is gonna revise their bid to what the drawings show. But just being prudent here, we really should send it and just at least get one other price to see where we're at. It's part of our responsibilities, not just requirements to get pricing. But it puts us in a bad spot with what's happening. So on one hand, we've got the city telling us, you know, we can't move forward. And then the other one, the other side of it, which is the department saying, well, you need to move forward. So we're in a bad spot right now in that one.
And the renters are saying we need to move back. We're losing that income every month, so it's like...
But it's tied into a contract, so they can't say, well, we can't move in until we've got something else in the meantime?
Well, it's a contract with us for lease, so that's, I mean, we're just being fair right now.
That I get, but I'm just...
But the problem is, is it takes them like three to four months to set up a daycare with licensing. So it's not like they can, and they're operating their current facility still. So they at least have that. The only thing we have control over is what our rent is that we're collecting, so we can leave that for now.
But it just seems like the city is throwing things in front of us just to kind of trip us up.
Well, if, my two cents on that would be, it would have been nice to get a, hey, you have 12 months to remedy this, not, oh, now we can't do anymore. There was no notice.
Right, right.
That's the only issue I have with it, because I do agree with them, we need to repay, and then we are obviously taking steps towards that goal. But having absolutely zero notice of them when our previous tenant went and got their occupancy, now no longer allowed to get occupancy permits, there was zero notice.
Yeah, that's not right, and our contractors wanted to start last month with the repaving. It just doesn't seem fair.
Yeah, that's interesting.
I feel like a lot of rent due right now is due.
Yeah. I don't fault them for requiring drawings. I really am just having an issue with the occupancies without repaving. It's not as if we're not already in the process of doing that. That's my frustration with it.
Okay.
All right, trustee Gasser.
Um, the rummage sale is all set. There has been some confusion with the date. I think I've made it pretty clear. I think Chris put it in the newsletter, I put it on Facebook, we've put it on Facebook twice now. There was some confusion between garage sale and rummage sale, so people think it's here. Very, very odd. I don't know why people think it's here, but it's at people's homes, so hopefully everyone knows that the garage sale is happening at your own home if you participate. Just a lot of little things like that. Um, I'm saying I'm putting out signs on Sunday. In a few different spots, probably out here, just so we get some people knowing that it's coming on Friday and Saturday for next weekend, but maybe then word will get out for people that don't realize it's coming, in the village that it's coming next weekend. So after the Saturday, I'll probably put some signs out so people know it's coming up the next weekend. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. The other thing that I want to say is just tunes for, tunes on Taylor. Chris is really taking ownership of that, and I just wanna talk to you later about buying a can of P for our, and making sure we have that in place. And that's it for my end.
I have another question. When you put the signs up, I know in the past you've had problems where people will pick them up and say you can't do that. I'm just kinda wondering, are you gonna put them like in high-traffic areas?
I'm just gonna put some right here by the village hall, but in that spot like just south of the memorial.
Okay.
Um, just probably two there, and then one in the circle in the, when you first come into the village. And then, if I can talk to anybody about like, maybe ask Kathy Wells, can I put one in her front yard just so people know that it's happening? I don't know, just a couple different spots that are maybe in people's yards and not... Like, I avoided the area brought down by the BP and by Walgreens, because that's where they got taken, and it's on people's yards, so I just have to make sure I'm far enough. I also called last year, I think, we called someone. Did we call, who did we call? Not those folks.
To not have a sign?
Yes, we called somebody ahead of time.
Probably the county shares one.
Yeah, just to let them know, please don't remove them, and that seemed to help.
What do I hear?
Yeah, maybe go put one, that would be great.
Yeah.
That's true.
What's interesting is...
Why don't you both take one tonight?
That's right.
That would be great, but don't move it out until Sunday.
Well, the area is, it'll be contested if at all, is gonna be later because that maintains the county highway status all the way through.
Okay.
Public works in the county can look at that differently. Taylor actually stops being a highway as it goes through the village. So that sign on the northern end of Taylor that says Elm Park, that's ours. So between there, no one should be touching that.
Okay.
Right here, this is county highway again, so and Racine, so... Be aware.
Well, we put, when I put signs out there for something related to like our open house for school, and I think we've had, it doesn't seem like they touch anything on our side. So, otherwise I call and then have to go pick them up. Can only happen once, but I'm not very happy. So I think that's it, I think everything is, I think people are, I've gotten more emails of people participating, but I have had some, like, is it at the village hall? No. Which I thought was really odd, and I don't know if like, I don't know why, I don't know.
Imagine all the stuff being brought to the village hall.
I have no idea why that is. So I keep just trying to be clear as to what's happening, and it's just a little bit awkward. So, it is at your house for anyone participating at your house. Do not bring your things to the village, or I hope it's not here.
It's 17th and 18th.
17th and 18th, next Thursday, Friday, or I mean, it's Friday, Saturday, next Friday and Saturday.
So I'm gonna take a side.
It's a very long day, it'll pass me much later. And that's it, and I just, I think, tunes on Taylor. Chris, you could follow up with that if you want later, feel free. Just have no more. Okay, that's all. Alyssa?
Thank you. Trustee Hinkle.
Uh, nothing to report.
Trustee Johnson?
Nothing, except the nice newsletter.
Trustee Ruth?
Um, just work, I think we talked about this last month also, as far as working with the electrical contractors and getting bids, and everybody's gonna do those bids today, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Stein?
I have no report.
Trustee Studi?
I have nothing to report.
All right, administrator Jenkins?
All right. Well, a lot of stuff that I've been working on the past month, we're coming tonight, so I want for you that stuff before you can yet. I do touch on the events today that met, trustee Gasser covered a lot of that stuff, but tunes on Taylor is coming up, June 21st, on a Tuesday. We have live music, we secured a taco truck, it's gonna be nice, got drinks, have a good old time, spread the word, tell your friends, it's not just an Elm Park thing, it's a community thing. We'll have lots of good fun that night. Uh, let's see...
And he's great, I've heard him live, and he was, he was actually at Milligan's where I heard him, and I was like, ooh, that would be a good fit. So I think, and he's performing with his two, his subdaughter and son for, in their late twenties, so it's a good, good band.
Is Chris gonna follow?
Chris, are you gonna follow?
I'm not, I'm not the one, I'm sorry. Um, I hand out the newest edition of the municipality that you guys get every month that I wanna highlight, so this month is specifically advice testimonials, just good stuff for new officials, so hint, hint, some new officials. You guys can check that out, and if you look really closely, you might even see a quote from yours truly somewhere in there.
Oh.
So I guess you win a prize if you can find it.
Really?
We, on the, some good news, we got new tenants in building number two, so this is not the massage therapy side, but the other side where there's office space. We got all the office space rented out. So with that office space rented, that means that we're hooked up. The town complex, for the first time.
Yeah.
First time in a long time, so that's awesome. And also aiding us in value number five, which is fiscally responsible community for both residents and government, I would like to congratulate Kendall Barrier, who's our hall and gym sales rep. For those of you who don't know, he set an annual goal, I think it's 22,000 for hall and gym rental revenues, and Kendall hit that as of this month. I'm gonna congratulate her with my value award for this, for this month. And this, so, this so re, that Kendall Barrier serving as a heir of village hall and gym sales rep, has continuously gone above and beyond in her goal for the success of herself in the village. By doing so, she has helped the village hit their annual goals for revenues only halfway through the year, and these efforts have helped to represent value number five, blah, 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 blah. So let's give her a round of applause, applause. It does. So thank you for everything that you do, thanks for taking time tonight to come be here.
And just in a short amount of time, she just, what did she take over? Just recently took over that position.
Sometime last year, yeah.
Fantastic job, thank you so much.
Been rocking it, so thanks so much. And I got a birthday present to you, so...
Oh yes, happy birthday to you.
You said drinks.
What's that?
So you said drink, said two, and I was like, you're all married then?
There's gotta be somebody serving.
I'm feeling on you too, okay, thank you.
I think that should be it. Thanks.
Okay. Old business. Approval of demanding 2022 contract with asphalt contractors Inc. for project retaining the BB school property. Uh, where did we have those bids? Hey, please.
So this is coming back to you from, from last month's regular meeting. So before, I brought you just a bid from asphalt contractors.
Yep.
You win the prize. Um, I brought you just a bid from asphalt contractors for the portory construction, parking lot, and the two pavement slabs that BB school is asking, sorry, Evergreen Academy is asking for. In response to that, you guys asked for me to also get a quote on a sidewalk extension, get at least three additional bids, and see if Evergreen would be willing to both sign a letter of intent to continue their lease beyond their current time and have a 50/50 split of the cost. So they're actually fine with the letter of intent to some degree. They are not, they do not agree with paying for half the cost. So that means I just took out the items that they wanted, which were the slabs on there, and I'm only asking for us to pay for the things that better in the village's interest. That would be, again, the porch, the parking lot, and the sidewalk extension. Even after collecting other bids, you'll see there in front of you that asphalt contractors is still the lowest bidder, that's 6,252. So I'd be asking for approval of that amount with a 10% contingency so we can get the ball rolling on this project. Any questions?
Aye, I mean, I thought we were waiting for a motion first, I was to say discussion or whatever. I just had some questions, and this might be something that Ernie or yourself know a little bit more about, but when I'm looking at asphalt contractors, it's pretty straightforward, no problems that way. But then I looked at the Johnson paving, and they've just got a lot more verbiage on here, and they're a little bit more precise, and so they're talking about low church, and I'm wondering if this is gonna be low church? I don't know, because that's something that affects the concrete as far as stability and later on. And they've got like crack fill lot sealant and rubberized, putting something in there to make it less, you know, have more traction, and this polymer modified star micro page sealer, sand micro or macro latex polymer, I'm thinking, is that, you know, something that we should be concerned about? I mean, or is this kinda like the same thing here that asphalt's gonna be doing? Is that all kinda like an industry standard?
Well, low church is really the popular legalized, about seven years. So seven years ago, for some reason, and church is, it's the aggregates. So low church is essentially just saying low aggregate, they're smaller aggregates.
It's less popping.
But that's what it is, and so, for seven years ago, every slab that was poured in the city was popping. Everyone was having the same issue. What it is, is there was a lot of iron in the aggregate, and it was, it was rusting and it was popping off. So low church, I mean, it's, some people are doing it still, some people aren't. I mean, to me, it's really just time of year when you pour it and then curing, that's the biggest concern. Low church, you could probably have asphalt contractors go to low church and, you know, change, and that's how I would bid something like this, that they're doing standard mix in a low church, it's insignificant. So the polymer, what it is, is not all coatings for, seal coating are made the same. They have all sorts of different kinds now. The thing that gets me is that no matter what, you're still scraping up the whole way over it. You know what I mean? I, if the parking lot's that bad that you really need those, those types of coatings, to me, you need to be resurfacing anyway. So I guess, I mean, it's nicer to use the better polymers, but I don't, I don't see a night and day difference. You know, for me, seal coating, if you get three years out of it, you got your money's worth. It's so inexpensive, and you see the cost of it too. I don't like throwing a lot of money at seal coating. I don't, I don't think it gets you what most people think it gets you. Filling the cracks is the most important thing, stop the water from penetrating the surface.
Well, that's, that's fair enough, because I know if you're looking at the two contractors, there's a $2,400 difference, and that's a big chunk of money, but I just thought, are they really giving us $2,400 worth of better equipment or better product, or is asphalt just fine? It sounds like what you're saying, that asphalt is just fine and pretty much standard stuff.
I guess, I just didn't see anything that made a major difference to me. I mean, if it, if it comes down to it, I don't wanna make or avoid the question, it's, this seems like Johnson's gonna be using a better seal coat.
Better, but you're...
Yeah, it's not really spelled out from the asphalt contractors which one they're gonna use.
Says commercial grade sealer.
Yeah, what is that?
You don't know?
You know, it doesn't...
I just didn't know the industry had like, a thing that they used.
Polymer modified, that's the Cadillac system. There's polymer modified crack filler, there's all sorts of stuff like that.
Yeah, and polymer is what Johnson wanted. But...
Yeah, I guess I just don't, if I thought that it was...
Yeah.
That was better, I'd be saying that right now.
That's what I wanted to hear. I just thought, all these things, and there's just so much more verbiage on this stuff, and I'm like, ooh, how come it's so different? This is very basic, but seeing that that has been discussed, I will move to approve asphalt contractors for, to work at BB school with a total charge of 6,252 with a 10% contingency to be built from the 2021 road fund.
Okay, I promote my trustee Ruth to award asphalt contractors for the work requirement in the amount of 6,252 and plus a 10% contingency. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gasser. Discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, so passed. All right, moving forward, discussion and approval of new business, discussion and approval of, to award bid for 2020 village-wide crack filling and minor repairs. Please press.
Sure. It's a little bit easier. We just went out to bid for crack fillings to cover crack filling repairs of all the roads not touched by the road reconstruction plan last year. So we went out to bid, asphalt contractors were the lowest bid at 9,987. So if you add 10% contingency, we'll look for approval for them to take care of that as well, for 10,986. That's it.
And that's from leftover funds to the road, correct?
Correct.
I wanna be a crack filler. 10 grand. We actually, the first year, well, the first time I, we did this when I was on board, we actually got a really low price of 5,900, I think it was. And that was negotiated for days because they didn't think it was realistic. Material costs has gone up on everything, and to be honest, labor costs is way up now, so... I don't think that's an unreasonable price for the work involved. And we're not limited by the amount, but last time, they're basically gonna burn up material until it was gone. This is due to work, you know, as much material as needed, so... So we can go out there and point and say, you do do this, you should do that.
Is this in the whole village or just...
Whole village.
The next half of the park that was done last...
Right, obviously, because there better not be any need to fix anything over there.
It's a year old. Do we have a motion? So my trustee Ruth, do you have a motion?
Yes, let's see.
Move to make a motion to award the bid to asphalt contractors in the amount of 9,987 for the crack filling.
Second? Um, we have a motion by trustee Johnson to award the crack filling contracts you have, protecting them on 9,987. Do you want to add a contingency? Small.
Add a 10% contingency.
Plus a 10% contingency. And a second then by trustee Hinkle. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it so passed. Next item. Discussion approval to award bid for 2022 street lamp replacement project. Let's start with you.
Sure. So I spoke to all of you today, so it's not, nothing too surprising. We did go out to bid for our complete street lamp replacement project. We had RIC, who's our typical electrical contractor, created RFP for us to send out. It was worked on by a couple of us for the past month or so. Went out to bid with seven contractors, I believe it was, and then received estimates back from three of them. So those are the three that you had before you. We have RIC Electric, Premier Power, Electrical Contractors in Wisconsin. The lowest bid was from Premier Power. We did ask them to split, take up two meters that we have in the village, one which is their east side, one which is their west side. East side has 26 lamps in their current system, west side has 20. So with Premier Power, they are quoting the west side, we doubled it for $196,000, the east side for 263, and then for a total of $459,000. And that, yes, that is the lowest bidder out of those three. So as I've spoken with all of you today, your street lights commissioner, Laura Ruth, and I have had a good conversation. I think how I'd like to proceed, you guys can discuss, is I would still like a motion to move forward with Premier Powers, so that way we can be dedicated to one contractor. But two things with that. One, I'd like you to add a caveat, that we don't move forward, obviously, till we have some financial means of paying for this. That'll allow me time to reach out to Ellers, who is our financial advisors, to brainstorm with them the most cost-effective way to budget and pay for this. And two, it'll give us time to work with Premier Power to see in whatever way that we can fine-tune their estimate, find cost savings, whatever it might be, to perhaps get that number down a little bit too. That shows our constituents and our residents that we are moving forward to some extent. But at the same time, it's acknowledging that this is a pretty hefty amount of money. We first talked about this a few months ago, I cautioned this, that we might have to have discussion if you even want lamps in the village anymore. My guess is that you do, but this number really puts that into perspective of how costly having these types of lamps are. So I guess I'll leave it at that, and you guys can discuss as we wish.
So a few things. You're gonna get the question from people about, you know, why wasn't this part of the street project? This, this is completely independent of the street project, really boring, there's no open trenches, aside from the pothole where they actually go in. So when they bore it, you know, it kinda come in a sweep, so it doesn't start at like three feet, four feet, it slowly tapers down. And so many days you change from each light, the light, the light. This includes complete replacement bases, so the concrete base, the pole itself. We changed over to a single-phase system, we've got a two, it's, essentially it's a single-phase right now, it's gonna go 120, we've got a 240 system right now. And it's, it's gonna be more efficient, and to be honest, we don't know how much power's leaking into the ground right now, because the, the conductors that we have right now, it's just buried jacketed metal. And it's been in the ground for...
Six years.
I mean, to be honest, I don't know how long. I know it's, it's to the point where the stuff that's coming out just got cracks all over it. So power just wants to go to the ground, to the neutral. So it's not like it's, it'll fall and short the system. Power just is going into the earth in areas. We don't know where, we find out by, we get a bill, and we see where there's a bad leak, which we had two years ago. I guess, my biggest issue here is the cost, and I'm, I'm really backing off, I'm, I was joking earlier, you know, a lot of them will be here in a year, so this will be someone else's problem, but I'm really getting concerned about how much we're, we're spending. And this is another big ticket item. And keep in mind, even if you approve this, this is something I wanna talk about too, is that we're gonna have to do something to get the east side back on. So RIC and myself, well, at this point, we might just switch over to Premier because they've shown that they're more economical, and we might want to start moving forward with them on these repairs. We started, we kept going with RIC because we had them in on some repairs, and it was reasonable to just continue on with them because of the experience in the system. So if you do move forward with Premier, maybe we'd be making the switch now to Premier, and that's when we'd start doing repairs.
Do you think that they could repair what they already have, or is that like a done deal?
I think we could, to be honest. It's just, you're gonna keep repairing it, repairing it, repairing it.
The other question that we'll probably get is, did the streets cause the electrical to be the problem of why our electrical is out?
Well, what's interesting is the areas that we're, we're having the issue right now is, we didn't repaint the road.
Right.
We fixed the area, so what, what we did in the section that was bad, which is Stanish, where is that, is that Stanish in front of your house? I always forget that street.
There's Stanish and, yeah.
So Stanish and North Elmwood, and then west, and then the street light, which is pretty much right by the house, that was damaged during the street project. That line was bored and ran, ran brand new. So what we're talking about doing here was done on that section. So they pulled a PVC sleeve through the ground, and then they pulled the conductors through that. So that's the way to do it. If you ever have issues with the cable or the conductors, then you pull them out, you've got a tube in the ground that you pulled the conductors through. So this is really future-proof.
But that's working now.
It's working fine, yeah.
It's on the other side.
There's a junction in the ground there, and it's a really bad way it was put together, There's a junction in the ground there, and it's a really bad way it was put together, and it's really shallow. It's like this far beneath the road. That's why you have that cone there, because?
Cone bucket of like construction, there's like four of them over there.
That's why those are there, is because that area is still opened up. Because when we started having issues, we're like, well, you know, we repaved this when we did the work in the spring, and now it's, well, there's something going on there.
Right.
So we might have to open it up more to get that down further.
Okay.
To the point where we might just bore under the street there as part of the temporary defects. What happened, what most likely is, there's a conduit that goes under the street, conduit, it's just a tube, and the cables or the conductors go through that. Well, my theory is that that froze because it's shallow enough, and then raised up and cut the conductors that are going through.
Okay.
So the fix is not bad, it's just doing it the right way. We're probably bore that section under the street to the next lamppost.
So the 46, how many are currently out?
I think it's like 12 or something like that.
I haven't counted, but, yeah.
Basically, east Elmwood, east.
So do we have two options here? We can either go ahead with this, or we could check again to see if Premier can fix it before we spend $400,000.
Boy, so let me clarify, you're not committing any money today.
Right.
Regardless of what we do tonight, I would have come back to you guys for any sort of provision for anything like that. So you're not doing that. I'm just saying, let's move forward with the contractor, period. If it's Premier, that's fine. And then to President Rossi's point, we can ask those questions about, you have another creative way to fix this?
Yeah. I think that's where I stand, is I'd rather fix it, and I know that they probably need to be replaced, but that's a really hefty price tag.
I mean, that's what should be done. Ideally, this is part of that cliff, when this, when the loan payments fall out here.
Yeah.
This would be perfect to throw in there. You know, I thought this was going to be?
But not now.
I thought this was going to be a lot cheaper, to be honest.
Yeah.
Something that we could at least, I was thinking, maybe we could throw in the first phase for like, I don't know, somewhere closer to the 120, 125. Oh, but this is, this is becoming a big, not.
And to RIC's point, who happened to be the most expensive bidder, I mean, they started us down this route, because they started adding the numbers up, doing those fixes for each of the lamps, and they said, you might as well just replace the whole thing, you know? Not to say Premier wouldn't have a different, you know, solution, but.
I just like, yeah.
So what you're saying is?
That they weren't on for a little bit, they did come back.
I know it's that junction. I've spent enough time on it.
They came back to life, but they were out again, like two weeks later, and I was like, what is going on? It is dark, and I, both of you live on East Elmo, and it is dark.
It's a little dicey, it feels dicey.
It does.
It does.
It is dark.
It is dark.
Well, so, I mean, right now everyone's on board, let's get a short-term fix, let's at least get the lights back on.
Yeah.
This is not a little bit, so we'll do that, and then we'll have valley engineering discussions with Premier.
I think that's good.
And then depending on how those go, we might have a special session where if something needs to be expedited, and a decision needs to be made, then we can do that in two weeks or whatnot.
I would like to make a quick suggestion, possibly. And I know it may not be a permanent fixer, it may not be the best fix, but we could look into, I think, it'd be a good idea to look into solar-powered lighting that, you know, could potentially be a lot cheaper. Now, I don't know, you don't have to drill, or, you know, you don't have to lay any conduit, you don't have to pay for the electricity, once you pay for the pole. And the battery, the light, it's done. No, granted, excuse me. I think it, I think it deserves a look, put it that way. And if it comes down to, okay, you know, we, it's just, it's not feasible, it makes no sense, fine. But if it makes a little sense, you know, what we could potentially do is install a couple of them and see how it goes. You know, I was looking online, and they're like 300, 400 bucks. Now, again, I don't know how durable those are or anything, but I think it's worth looking into at least.
The problem we have right now is any solar option, so you're going to need new lamps, new poles.
Well, yeah, I know.
So, and the kind that you need to really store enough power, and the solar panel on these is pretty substantial, they're not, they're not small.
They tend to be, yeah, I know.
So the problem we have then is if you do have a stint of dark days, they won't work. They usually are going to hold like 10 hours, 10 hours of light, that's pretty dang good. After that, you're not going to have light, so that's part of the issue, and it's, I'm literally doing this right now in another location, and they're talking about this.
Sure, I get it, I understand.
It's just we're not there yet with solar. It'd be nice if we are, and we won't have the output that we're getting right now with line voltage. So that's, that's another issue. Because these are, now with the new LEDs, they're throwing some good light, you know? They're really not designed to be, to light the road down, light the road. That's the design, that's the purpose of street lighting, is to light continuously. The original lights, that's really not what they were for, they were ornamental. Now they're just overpowered, and they're throwing enough light where they can. So to maintain that, you know, we've got to stick with that type of power. I mean, I wish it was there, it's just, it's not yet. And then we have a lot of trees, too. Some of you got a tree in the way, and some of them are just like, they're smack dab under a bush or something, they're just not going to get enough light.
Well, it hasn't been looked at, you know?
Another option, maybe with these lights that Ernie's talking about, is maybe we can eliminate some of the poles themselves, just because you're putting out more light.
Correct. Be more efficient.
I think you have a right, because everyone who, people love their lights. When we, when we do the painting, I mean, because I was stopping out, and I was talking to the electrician, the painter, people will come out, they'll be talking, the nuances of their light, the reflectors, the things that they knew about it, I mean, I think you'd get a lot of pushback when you start taking people's streetlights away.
Even if you had like a last year, put off more light though, because like the audience wants now, but if you've got something that's putting out a big rate of light in a bigger area.
Like some of those LED, and when you drive through an LED intersection, it's like daylight when you're driving through it. I don't know if I want five of those on the road, that might be a bit much, but the corners might be, you know, maybe. I don't know, it might be.
Yeah, the one that, this was talked about, I forget what part, I don't know, the strategic plan of the road project or whatnot, but the, and poor, I don't count them on this, that what they usually like to see is, you know, a 30, 40-foot fixture with two-directional lighting, and then there's usually like a 40-foot throw. That's what, that's what they design to, when they're, when you're talking about street lights.
So the Premier Power quote includes what kind of lights? How tall are the poles?
They're going to be comparable to what we have here, but they're going to be a little bit.
They are taller than what we have.
Are they like the arch kind that do that, or just kind of what we have?
It's similar to what you have now, just taller, newer LED lights.
And it'd be nice to do it.
Can you change the state?
I mean, living, being selfish and living on a street, yeah, I bet 100%, but I wonder. So are we closing out, should we go with this as a contractor, and then explore at this point, repairing just the ones that are out? And maybe like capping, like, you know, I mean, I don't know how much repair is going to be, repair is going to be $100,000.
No, the repairs, the repair would probably be somewhere around $8,000, just to get, well, that's assuming that there's going to be, no, just, there's one bad junction right now.
Just repairing that piece.
Repair that bad piece, if we have to bore it, maybe a little bit more, but I'm just thinking there's going to be some time. What we did last time was, we rented the equipment, we operated the equipment, and then the electrician just acted as an electrician. So if there's boring, that kind of goes away, so we put in some time of our own to help.
Uh huh, I tried to.
The quick fix is cheap, it's very cheap. That's why I'm thinking we do that, and then we go back to Premier and say, is there any way you guys can think of to get this down without sacrificing critical items, like the conduit, the HDB tube, or, you know, is there, is there a fixture that you know about that is really going to save us a lot of money here? What other options do we have? Can we phase it smaller and work our way, you know, quarter phases out? So that's kind of what I'm thinking, is we'll establish a unit pricing level with Premier and say, well, let's look at maybe just doing a smaller portion of it right now, so we can at least keep working our way from east to west. Because the east side is where we seem to be having the issues, and there's still one lamp that never even got fixed, which is the one.
There's one that, where you had to mount with your one of Mount Pleasant, another thing, that is dangerous.
It's been out for years, right?
They, that one just needs to be reran, and it never got included in what the rest of the work was.
A stranger pressed my house, they actually took the whole pole out, all of ours were working, and then all of a sudden these were out, then they worked, and everything on the west side was done, and they actually took out that whole pole.
I mean, I do think we should start looking at really replacing them. If this was two years in the future, it'd be perfect, because we could time it right to that point.
Well, maybe we do this in two years.
That's what I'm thinking, is we lived through right now, we, maybe we look at doing, you know, we've got 42 lamps, is it?
Forty-six.
Forty-six? So maybe we look at doing 12 right now, and see what the response is on that. Once we start though, I mean, we've got to keep going with that. And that brings into question, you know, are we going to be able to get this, you know, what is the realist, what is the reality of, are these lamps always going to be available? Do we buy all the lamps right now and stockpile them so we know we've got them? That's why I'd like to talk to Premier on this one. We just got these, Chris just got these, right before this meeting.
Can I ask the demo question? So does RIC know about this junction issue? Because we've been dealing with this for three months, and don't you think that there was a quick, easy fix that they would have brought that up?
To be honest, I was, I was dragging a lot of the repairs, because it's an odd system. And Tim Kradowitz and I were having a lot of discussions about what goes where, and I, I mean, I actually have a pretty dang good idea where the junction is. I think RIC's looking at it as too, you know, they're just, they're billing us for all these repairs, they're like, you know, they're looking at it like we've got to recommend something different than just constantly repairing these things. But I don't think it's their fault.
So I think I'm going to adjust repairs.
I actually bring it into Cody, who's the guy who did their repair, and we were talking about it, I said, you know it's that junction, and he was like, yeah, probably I clipped the frost that you were saying earlier. So, that's, like Chris is saying, let's run with Premier right now, they're low, let's see what their ideas are. I'd say on this one, you know, do we want to, do we want to stay with RIC for the repair? Or do we go with Premier now, because they've demonstrated that they're competitive?
I think you need to set eyes on that personally. That's my thought, sorry.
Agreed.
I agree too. And if that's who we're projecting to have to do the replacement project in the future, they might as well start raising their hands up now.
That's kind of what I'm thinking.
So I'll still investigate financial options.
You don't make a motion.
Just in case, I mean, we can do it at varying amounts, right? So we have in our back pocket.
Yeah, honestly, that is. Okay, so we really don't need a motion for that, it's just an understanding at this point, then. So we're going to proceed, we're going to engage Premier, we're having a meeting, if we see some glaring success option here, that requires bringing everyone back for a special session, we'll call that a roll, okay? But then, the barriers will be Premier, so we're going to engage Premier with the repairs, okay? All right. Okay, next item. Discussion and approval of design and construct contractors making property at Sandish Lane, which has need feature parts. Chris, please.
All right, more exciting news than our last item. So I've been checking into various design and construct contractors for the park property. Got it down to two contractors. Both of these are qualified, recordable, have done work. They are free through the design process, come to as many meetings as we want, all the good stuff, and then you just pay for the equipment and installation once you, once you pick. I went through into my documents, I don't need to go through all this again, but the two bidders, Lee's Recreation and, I'm sorry, Wisconsin, Minnesota Playground. I was just more impressed by Lee's Recreation. They've done more work locally in the area, their prices are a little bit cheaper, cheaper.
Yeah.
The only, the only real difference between the two is that Minnesota, Wisconsin Playground talks about this direct bolt system that they're really proud of, and they openly admitted that their costs are higher because of that. I sent you that whole presentation, 60-some pages. If you feel that it's valid than that, then sure, but I'm telling you, I spoke to both of them, they both came out to the site, they're both very friendly, but I would just recommend that we move forward with Lee's Recreation. So then from here, I just believe President Rossi had some suggestion about how we go through that design process, but all I'm asking for tonight is that we commit to Lee's and work. I'll add, they also had three different examples that you should have already seen on the panel, which is really nice, they're already putting in the work, which is great to see.
So what I'm thinking, because this, this is a lengthy conversation, just in what should be in the park. My idea is to turn this into a committee item, so that the time that's needed to be given to a candidate given. I was having, I was just twirling around in my head, and there's, there's kind of a hub that's happening, and has been, so I talked to Ally about being chair of the committee that would be the design committee for the park, so we'll think of a better name for it for now. But we have Ally, we would need one other trustee, I'm hoping that someone would be interested in, okay. Are there any other trustees that would be interested in being on this? Because I'd like to have two, so that I can attend the meetings if need be, so the two allows me to still attend without us having to walk in corral.
So do you want one more besides Linda and I, so to try?
No, I'm saying if there's anyone else, because then we have to figure out who should be on it. I don't want to, I don't want to just eliminate anyone who might want to be on it, okay?
Me and Kat is on a metal slide, so get stickered and burned.
You guys are on. So you're, you're on the committee then, you're chair, did you, Rachel's okay?
Rachel, I've not got ahold of her yet. I think she's actually uptown, but I did text her, but I didn't, I just said I need to talk to her, so I will check with Rachel Gage. Michelle Elstro was all about it, and does everybody know who Michelle Elstro is on the corner? You know, I know, I know you know Michelle's, Michelle's kids.
All the kids?
Yes, all the kids on the corner. And then if Rachel said no, the other person I was going to check in with, Kendall, because she has a bunch of kids, too.
I think, I think four is good, and then myself and Chris can hop on if needed to keep things moving.
Yeah.
And then Chris will be the driving communicator between you and Lee, if that's someone you want to move forward with. You're not bound by any of the options, you can add more, you can, you've got a lot of free range here.
Okay.
But use them as a resource to help get you through the process. You know, there's, we don't know exactly what we want in this thing, and I feel like this group that we're talking about on this committee is the group that's going to want to have, that is going to give a lot of feedback on what should be in the park.
I think our plus has been to playgrounds, many, many times.
That's what I'm saying, I think that's the best way to handle it. Did you see how, I mean, there's millions and millions of configurations here.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, to the point where it is overwhelming, so that's why, work with them, say, hey, you know, we're looking for this, you know, maybe you've got some ideas on how to change this. There's an aspect to this that they're really not going to hit on, and we talked about it in planning commission a little bit, and then on the board side after planning commission, is are we going to do parking, you know, and things like that, that are, that are kind of ancillary items. So you'll, we'll, we'll give you guys a black survey, you'll get their drawings, which show approximation, so then you would task things to myself, Chris, or Lee about, you know, well, maybe we want to see this, and be able to actually play around in the space and see what you're doing there. So at this point, that's where I'm thinking, we give this to committee, you guys spend some time with Lee. At this point, it'd be nice to just, I don't think we necessarily need a motion on it, but let's say we're going to proceed with Lee, they're going to want some intent from us, so we can furnish the documents, says, you know, our intent right now is to proceed with Lee recreational, we're in the design phase, we need that assistance, and you guys work on that with them?
I'll do.
So then I'll just add that after the committee makes their decision on what they want this to look like, you guys will then bring that design to planning commission, and planning commission will give their recommendation, they don't have to approve it necessarily, they'll give their recommendation, and that goes to the board for actual final approval.
And it's not a conflict of interest, but I'm also on planning commission.
So not knowing the response from Rachel. Well, not knowing the response from Rachel, let's keep this ad hoc for now. We can formalize this if we really need to, but we all understand the purpose of what you're doing.
Yeah.
I'll just add that.
And I will just keep you going. Of course, when I hear her, I left my phone at home.
Try and, try and keep a lot of these communications, if you can, to email, because that's the easiest way for us all is to keep track of these types of items. All right? Any other, any other input or questions?
I just want to, you know, know how we're gonna pay for this. Not so much myself, because I know Kelly and Chris and Ernie are taking care of it. But I think for people out in the community, they're gonna wanna say, well, we gotta fix all these lights and stuff. But I think we have, Chris has gotten some money from the federal government that is to be used for this type of thing. And I think it's important that people know that. So we're not just spending freely here with no concern about the street lights. So that is coming from a grant.
Yep. So we have $26,000 right now, which should be under agenda in ARPA fundings, American Rescue Plan Act monies. And I just checked today, you'll be getting another half of that money June 20th is when that's coming. So you'll have about $50-ish thousand that you specifically can use for equipment and installation. So like when you, when you look at plan number one, I think it was from that, they quoted like $45,000, including the installation and everything. So that'd be the bulk of your cost would come out of that.
Because I know like we're seeing it, they've got a referendum coming up now to have additional police. And it's gonna be, what, $2 million? And there's a lot of people in the community saying, well, jeez, we just used all this money to fix the electric cable cars that they have or whatever. And they said, why did we use it for the police? Well, that was said from the government. He gave it specifically, he can't use it for just any kind of...
Anybody ask me, you know, gets any question, that's, that's why.
I would just answer more broadly that as, as a municipal government, you know, your sphere of influence is multiple things, right? It's public safety, it's infrastructure and it's quality of life stuff too. That's all important for your municipality.
So we, we're always looking for additional federal, state, whatever funds for these types of projects. I say we put this all on Kendall and she's gonna lease out a lot more. So then, yeah, put her on there. All right. Any other questions?
Please.
Okay.
Should we have a motion?
Do you think so?
In some way, shape or form.
All right, we'll look for a motion then for our intent to proceed with Lee Recreation with preliminary design on, through ad hoc meeting. It's the best way I can think of. And you can say, so I so move, anyone? You don't have to repeat that. All right, we have a motion to proceed with Lee Recreation, L C, under ad, and by ad hoc committee. Chair of which will be Trustee Gasser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Hinkle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? So passed. And I think we just have accounts payable. Okay? Everyone had a chance to review accounts payable? So I just stopped.
I did not get any.
I didn't. Linda and I just...
He's sitting here.
Oh. I'm gonna make an decision. We can't see each other.
Yeah. And after tonight, this is it.
The teacher and me. You on the other end of the table right now, sir.
All right then. Now everyone has had a chance to review and approve accounts payable. Do we have a motion?
That's so stupid.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable.
You moved?
Move. See, I see it wrong every time we're chatting.
All right. We have a motion to approve accounts payable by Trustee Gasser. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Trustee Studing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it? So passed. And we're adjourned.